Yeah. I'm going to Jeff.
So it is six thirty two. All meeting the order. Um, approval of the meeting agenda. There's one thing that I do want to change. Um. Under new business, update the alternate position. That's what I want to plot. Originally, it was making a consensus of the planning commission for the alternate position. And then.
Last night I gave you that.
Okay, okay, okay. So. That's, that's what we'll do. And then, um, just looking for. Approval of the meeting agenda with that one piece being switched unless anybody else has got something.
I would move to approve that amended agenda.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
What was opposed? Okay, approval of minutes from May twenty second. The of two thousand twenty five meeting. Did everybody get a chance to read them? I did too. Can I have? A show of a hand approval.
You're sure you read them?
Yeah.
You always find something wrong.
I didn't read them. I had to think for a second.
Alright. I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of May twenty second, twenty twenty five meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Okay, public comments? No, none? No public comments, nobody over on Zoom?
Well, welcome to Nancy.
Yes.
Okay, so Nancy is officially an alternate. Well, shouldn't she be sitting here somewhere? Maybe yes, in the corner here or?
She should.
I'd sit here.
Your choice, if you're comfortable.
It's, I just don't want you.
No chairs.
Well, I could put one over here and.
Next time.
Alright, okay. Um, so old business, we're gonna work on the zoning with Logan Solomon. He's on Zoom. Alright, Logan.
Hey, everyone.
So there was a couple of things that we're gonna, um, circle back to. On the document that you sent us, um. Probably we should start with that.
That sounds good.
Are we talking about the subdivision bylaws?
Yeah, it's been a subdivision.
Yeah, so there's two things that, um, were highlighted on yellow. One. Uh, was the on the, in the section one oh five of the, um, addendum. Um, it is, you know, in those, those tables, um. The location of fragile features and natural and cultural resources. And essentially, that was something we wanted to circle back on. On whether that needed to be clarified, or how we might want to modify that, or if that language is needed. Um, and maybe also related to that question is the second. Piece, which is something I, um, indicated in the email was that. Um, in looking closer at what are the requirements in state statute? For subdivision regulations, um, there is a subsection requirement of. Um, standards for protecting natural and cultural resources and preserving open space as appropriate for the municipality. Um, and so there was, um. Essentially some suggested language and ultimately, you know, really what? The, you can do whatever you want with that language, um, but really I was just trying to get a sense of. What? Language that might meet the requirements of that statute, um, that isn't, you know, super. Detailed and you can, you can make these requirements however you think is appropriate for Pittsburgh ultimately. Um, but there needs to be something that just ultimately is checking that box. Um. Standards for protecting natural cultural resources and preserving open space as appropriate for the municipality. Um, and in my eyes, I was thinking one ways of determining what is appropriate is looking at the town plan and. Whether the town plan provides any guidance.
Okay.
So I guess both of those are, are related to one another. Um.
I got a question. Rick's got a question.
Okay, Logan, on page four of the first highlighted yellow. The last, the last sentence says circle back on how to clarify, modify or delete this language. Could you explain that?
Because we needed to do our zoning regs first.
I just wanna.
It's also, it was also a question of, so these are, um, you know, materials that you're, you're, um, like, what are, what is required actually to be shown on the map? Um, and so. You know, thinking about what the, the subdivision regulations, like, okay, you're showing, um, you know. Again, we're working off of Brandon's current, um, revision. So, you know, in, in, in Brandon's subdivision regulations, they're requiring mapping of things like wetlands, floodplains. Surface waters, steep slopes, knolls and ridge lines. So part of it was like, okay, how do we determine what is a knoll? Like a prominent knoll is the term that they use in their language. Um, and so there was questions of like, okay, do we need to clarify what exactly is a prominent knoll? Could we just delete it? Um, is it just a, so essentially that's this, that was sort of the, the question. And I think. Um, you know, part of that question is answered on based off of what? Okay, you're requiring me to map steep slopes. You're requiring me to map wildlife habitat or whatever. Um, why? Okay, it's because there's a standard in the regulations that the planning commission needs that information to make a determination, or sorry, not the planning commission. Um, the zoning board to make a determination. Um, so ultimately you want the mapping required. A mapping requirement is there because you want that mapped in order to inform the decision-making process.
Um, well, I know that when we, we did our town plan last time. The fact that because there was an issue with involving connectivity on wildlife corridors. And we met that, they, the. Regional, rural and regional. Help that we met. Uh. By the fact that Pittsburgh had upland conservation, one and two.
Hmm. Yep.
Where those areas are defined and, you know, lot different regulations for development and so forth. Lot of protection there.
Hmm, right. Yeah, and so this requirement, you know, is really. Ultimately. The. The reason why it was, do we need to clarify it or do we need to delete it is kind of like the? What are the scenarios here? Okay, you, you, you keep it as is. Um, and an applicant is trying to understand, well, do I need to include this thing in my, my subdivision plot or not? Do I have a prominent knoll or do I not? Um, and. That, you know, maybe then there's, there's guidance from, you know, the town on whether they have to include certain things or not. Um, and then on the flip side, you know, then you have that information and it can help you inform decisions. If you don't include that information, um, maybe it's okay because not knowing where prominent knolls are isn't really that important. If I'm just, um, doing a single subdivision, um, between, or maybe it's, it's. One parcel being divided into, into three parcels or something. So maybe it. You know, so essentially it's, it's, is that information needed in order to make a determination on the, on the, on the regulations? Um, and so if the regulations don't really speak to. You know, the subdivision regulations specifically, because that's what we're looking at. If they're not really speaking about prominent knolls, is there a reason to require the applicant to provide? A, a map depicting prominent knolls. Um, in some cases, it, it might be appropriate if the town's regulating prominent knolls, but it might not. Does that answer your question?
Well, sort of, except I don't know what the definition of a prominent, prominent knoll is.
Yep, and, and that was why we were saying, um, you know, we'd probably want to clarify. What, what exactly are we meaning? A prominent knoll is, or is it, is it not really necessary to talk about prominent knolls and we could just delete that? Um, because yeah, I would agree. I'm not really sure exactly what a prominent knoll is, um, which is why.
Yes.
Yeah, um, yeah, which is why we were like circle back on whether it needs to be clarified. Change it from prominent knoll to something more specific, or is it just like, hey, we don't? It's okay if we just strike that whole piece. That's kind of what we're circling back on. Um.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Yep.
So we choose to keep it or strike it or modify it?
What do you just take? I don't think it's necessary. I'm just trying to think in the past, like. Where would be and what would qualify a prominent knoll right now? Anybody don't, Donna, you got a prominent knoll out in front of your house? You have that one behind you? That's starting to go out. Well.
But there again, it's definition.
What's the definition?
Right. And so I would say, you know, I would, I would say like that, and I, I used, I pointed out that term to, because to me that was the one that I was like, what is like exactly a prominent knoll? Um, but may, it's, it's kind of a question of. Okay, clarify it, uh, it's. Whatever slope or whatever, you know, something that's more tangible and being able to actually quantify. Or it's, hey, do we really need that or can it just be struck? Um.
I say, I strike it. I say strike it. They get it out.
Yep, and so, you know, wetlands are, are the state maps wetlands. Um, so some of these things are more clear than others. Um. So yeah, prominent knolls, a ridge line, would a prominent ridge line be something, or do you think that's another one of those terms? It's like a little.
Yeah, I should stretch that as well.
Yeah, a lot of houses have been built along the ridge line. Look at, well, Orchard Hill, when you're going down Route seven, you look up there.
That's considered a bridge line?
Well, it could have been at one time.
When you looked up there before any of those houses were there? That was at the top of Cornhill Ridge. You go along that ridge and then drop over the other side down Five Fox Farm. Yeah, I would say definitely.
So I'm hearing strike prominent knolls and, and ridge lines in that. Um.
Yes.
The keep. Keep wetlands. Flood point, stop me, if, you know, um. Wetlands, floodplains, uh, surface waters, steep slopes, you could add a percentage there. Um, if you, to define what exactly steep means. Um. If, if you wanted to clarify that, um. I've seen that done by some towns before. Um. But sometimes it's more open-ended, um, wildlife habitat and natural areas. And again, um. There are data sets that map wildlife habitats and natural areas, but also it's. Maybe a little bit more squishy than compared to like wetlands, for instance. Um. And then there's also historic resources, farmland and forest resources in the area. And all this has to do with. In the area to be developed. Um, so, you know, in the, and. In the area to be developed, I, I, is an interesting term too, because we're talking about a subdivision. So are we talking about like? So there's, this is another piece that could be clarified of the area to be developed. Are we talking about, okay? There's a ten acre lot and we're, you know, subdividing it into, let's say, three parcels. Two of those parcels are an acre and one of them are, are eight acres. And so the two smaller parcels are the areas to be developed. Versus the larger eight acres. I don't, I'm just looking at that term and wondering if maybe that term could be clarified. Are we talking about the entire subdivision? All ten acres in that example I just gave, or the? Smaller parcels that are likely to be developed, which is how I'm, I think this is. Trying to be, I think that's what they're saying here, in the area to be developed. So if you're subdividing parcels for the, and there are specific parcels, you're like, okay. I'm subdividing this and putting a single family home here versus, you know, these parts, this parcel is gonna be remain a forest or something. Um.
Well, wouldn't it be better to leave just more requirements in? And then, of course. When we're looking at the math that we've been presented, we can decide if it was a prominent knoll or a ridge line. But we got, we'd have to have the definitions though, so that the people that are developing it can know whether it's a. Did Brandon have, have actual definition? I don't, I didn't, I didn't read.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see. I didn't see a def, a, a definition of, of. That term in their zoning.
I can double check definitions too. Which means we could use our judgment. You know, some, if we had something we wanted to discuss, we can say that is prominent or that isn't. But if we just take it out. Then there's less to consider. I, you know, it's like, we as a committee, I think we would want to have more standards. And to see more, we'd get more information on a map that complied with more standards. We'd get a better idea. At what we're looking at, and we could still decide to disregard something that isn't a big field.
Is it gonna make it harder for people?
A little, it would make it a little bit harder. Um, but if we don't have a definition. You know, they could say to us, they'd be like, well, you don't have the definition. And we're like, well, you're right. Let's talk about what it means. But I just think if you take out, if they don't have to show anything. It's gonna be harder for us to know what's going on unless we're intimately familiar with the property.
Yep. And there is, um, you know, just looking at, there are, you know, the waiver authority piece. Um, in the subdivision application procedures. So, you know, if there are, you know, in the, in the context of the specific proposal. You're like, okay, yeah, there's really, um, you know, you can waive what is necessary given that context. Um, to say, okay, um, like, we know that this area doesn't really have any historic resources, um, or cultural resources. Um, and so you don't need to go and, and figure out whether or not you need to map historic or cultural resources. Um.
I don't feel that with the way it is and move on. Personally.
I believe in. Kind of make ease the people. Some to do their subdivisions and stuff, not make it hurt.
Well.
Yeah.
And if there's language in there that's left to, that you have to dig through and try to figure it out, that's not fair to the applicant. Well, and who would be making the decision on this? The zoning administrator?
Well, that's all that we went over before, you know, whether it's a zoning administrator decision or whether it's full committee, I mean, that's.
Is, is.
Simple subdivision is zoning and.
Yeah, and so this is, this is.
No saying they should indicate a ridge line, isn't that big a deal?
And right now, I would go to who, to the zoning board of adjustment or no?
Well, I think it would depend on.
Is that what we decided?
Yeah, how it, how it works is that there is the, the simple subdivision, which is the. Um, and that's in the, the one oh one, section one oh one B one. Um, where it's, it's saying where. If you're basically taking one lot per year. Um, and, and dividing it into two lots. It goes through the simpler subdivision process through the zoning administrator, and I believe that's what you already have currently. Um. And then. If, if it's not what I just described, um, then it goes through the zoning board of adjustment, um, and the. There's, there's more that actually goes in what it's actually required to submit.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Okay, well, well, to be precise, um, under that section, uh. Site plan review, because it's not considered a, almost subdivision.
Yeah, yeah.
It wouldn't have subdivision regulations.
Right, right.
The, the. The, uh, the process is traditionally then you go to site plan review. And then the planning commission will look at the application and determine if it conforms to the regulations for set out its coverage. And so on.
Right.
Um. Multiple subdivisions, I, I, it was, it was more complicated when Mike wrote it, building board. But I think this is the time to clarify or otherwise make a change to.
Yeah.
I thought we would, you know, just adopt the branding zone. So they use developer review board. They don't have a planning commission involved.
I, I'm gonna throw, and maybe another element into this, and, and that is what we're talking about. Our items and illustrations that need to be on the site plan and application for a subdivision. Called Pittsburgh. So just as a developer. I, I think it, there's a big crucial difference here with providing this information and pulling it off like. You know, the Vermont Atlas as an overlay. Or.
You're sure.
Or.
Yeah.
Or be, also ready to go out and get a consultant who's gonna be able to do like a wetland delusion. Or identify sensitive plant life or wildlife. So. If this criteria can be met with simple overlays of existing information as provided. That's one thing. That's one conversation entirely, because just speaking as a developer. Hey, I can pull this off the internet and show this. You know, pull the same maps that we can all pull, not a problem. And say, look. This isn't my site plane. This is my area. I went to the Vermont Atlas, A and R Atlas. And there's nothing here. And I'm gonna say there's nothing here and it's, it's verified. However. If somebody, and heaven forbid, a family who's trying to do a subdivision for their son or their daughter. Has to go out and hire consultants to make sure that there's no. Long-eared bats in the black focus on their property and blah, 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 blah. Pay fifteen thousand dollars to pay consultants to verify with expert testimony, blah, 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 blah. That these things are not happening for them to complete their site plan. It becomes a fifteen thousand dollar site plan and fifteen thousand dollar application as opposed to something that could be maybe fifteen hundred. So I guess I'm saying, and this is just me, is that these aren't a problem? As long as they don't have to be validated by. Somebody who's a, a state-recognized expert. So Logan, you've dealt with many towns and you've done zoning across the state. What is your experience in the criteria? For these requirements? Can they be Vermont, A and R Atlas, just general information, or do they have to be specific? Or somebody, no, we can't accept your A and R overlay that just no sensitive plant life or wildlife. You need to go out and hire a consultant to do it. Is it one or the other from your perspective? Because that's.
I. Yeah, yeah, no, I think it's, 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 I think you hit the nail on the head in a lot of ways.
I don't see a family have to go through the drudgery now. They have to for Act two forty eight permits. But I don't think that's what the town of Pittsburgh wants.
Yep, yeah, and so. I, I think your point is, is right on the nail on the head. So for example, like wetlands is a great example where like, yeah, the A and R Atlas, you can pull that. Right, so you can set it up, you can set it up. Any way you want to set it up. The way you're describing of like, hey, like, it's not that big of a deal. I just have to pull this down from the A and R natural resource atlas. Um. You can set it up that way, and I think that is the way I would recommend setting it up. Um, so, okay, wetlands, you can pull that down from the A and R Atlas. These flood-related, um, mapping layers, you can pull down from the A and R Atlas. Um, you know, surface waters.
Yeah.
Yep, actually, s- slope data you can pull down from the A and R Atlas. Um, wildlife habitat and natural areas. Is one of those terms where there's multiple data sets, um, and, and I think there's. Debate on what data set works and what doesn't and things like that. Um, and so, and you know, some towns. Have their own maps of wildlife habitat, um, that they locally have determined, hey, this is important. And that's another thing, you know, some towns have their own local maps. I'm not suggesting that, but I'm just saying that as, as, as an option. Um, and, you know, and then historic resources, farmland and, and forest resources, I think is another one where, um. You know, farmland and, and forest res, I, I think it can be written in a way where you're just broadly delineating.
Right.
It's a level of specificity that, that depending on, I think farmland and forest resources and. And historic resources, that's, that's one of those where. Historic resources, there's not really great mapping layers.
No, I appreciate it, Logan. If I could feed it back to you, what you're saying is the level. Of depth of that criteria, if we have it, is left up to us. Is that correct?
Yep, exactly, yep.
Under either tier?
On, if, if you have to go through the subdivision process, you know, you, you're, um. Yeah, you have to go and, and provide this, this subdivision plot. Um, then yeah, you're, you're structuring your subdivision bylaws as you, as you think is locally appropriate.
Okay, and then I know that we're still waiting on the LRB to adopt its final rules.
Yeah, yeah, and that's the.
We really don't know where we stand there, correct?
Yeah, and that's, that's changes in like state act two fifty. Um. Rulemaking, and yeah, that is, that is ongoing. Um, and, and yeah, and they're, they're. I think they also have their hands in some of this wildlife habitat mapping. Um, I, I believe.
That's what I saw in some of the information that I was looking at.
Yeah, and. Yeah, and so one thing, one thing to keep in mind is, um, you know, when you're, you're relying on state, state mapping layers, maybe, maybe the counter argument. To relying on state mapping layers is that they change, right? Um, so you adopt, you adopt these, these regulations and maybe the wetlands get redelineated or the flood layers or, or what have you, or wildlife habitat. Um, and so that is the one, um. You know, there's definitely the benefit of, hey, I'm a landowner and, and I can just pull down these layers easily. Um, but on the town standpoint, you know, these, these things might change, but ultimately what we're talking about here is what is required to be shown on a map. Um. That is, that is really the. When it comes to this specific part of the regulations, um, you know, so we're. Yeah, so, 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 yeah, it can be structured any way you ultimately want it to be structured. Um, in terms of, you know, whether you're requiring them to show wetlands at all, or, um, I mean, I. Or, you know, the wetlands are mapped by A and R, or, you know, maybe it's, it's wildlife habitat and you're, you're, you're saying, hey, use the state's wildlife habitat data sets. Or, or mapping layers map. Um. Or some towns even have their own wildlife habitat map, because they, they want to have their own control and saying, hey, this is what we consider wildlife habitat. In the context of our community, and then you're not relying as much on a state. Um, data set that might change outside of like your control. Um, so there, there. And this is, you know, the general thing in, in zoning and subdivision regulations across the region is there's, there's so many ways you can do it. It's about kind of finding what works for, for Pittsburgh ultimately.
Jeff.
No, I'm gonna just add some reality to the, the, this. I, I agree with Mike about the. Concern with, with the issues such as wetlands and floodplains and so on. Uh, right now, the zoning only says that we have to worry about, uh, state regulation when it comes to. Act two fifty and wastewater regulation. And then, of course, V trans likes to butt its nose into that, but it's not in the zoning now. So those three things might be regulatory. The problem is, as I see it. In the reality of life, um, is that people are coming in. With no experience or little experience. They have a professional licensed surveyor. And if they're doing a, a subdivision where they're going to go and, and, and offer, uh, ready to build housing, they'll bring in an engineer or a waste water. Licensee. But. I, those are all state laws, and you folks for decades have told me. That you don't want to get involved with state laws, and here I'm hearing that you want to bring them into the local zoning level, and I don't know. Um, for a lot of folks who don't use natural resource analysts and don't use. Um, you know, A and R stuff, uh, wouldn't know how to do it and certainly don't have any experience at interpreting it. Um, it's problematic. Uh, my, my policy is different than maybe other zoning administrators through the state. My policy is I do have some experience with these maps and things. And so I do try to check to make sure that. If you're building a house, it's going to be out of the map floodplain. And if they're building a house, it's going to be out of map wetlands. And then it's my job to tell the applicant of that, but I'm not at the point where. I'm obligated to deny an application for, um, a, a project under town rules. Would, because there's A and R rules, I just, I'm obligated to tell them there's A and R rules you should check on first before you go ahead.
So we should keep it the way it is now?
Exactly.
I, I, you've talked for years, I wanted to kiss simple, you know, and keep it simple, stupid, and, and.
And I love keeping it simple.
And, and stay to where, you know, the jurisdiction is, which is. The town level and notify people that you have other state levels that you need to attend to. And our permits say this does not release. The applicant or the property owner from also obtaining. Any other state or federal permits or town permits like road access. Yeah, that the project may require. That's a disclosure. It has worked alright now, and if you're gonna go into a, a major housing project. You're going to need the engineering and you're gonna get involved with, you know, more than nine lots and so on and so forth. So that's a different scale. But subdivision in Pittsburgh has been pretty minor for the last ten years. Hopefully, we'll be able to take advantage of Act one point forty seven and one eighty one, take advantage of some of the land that can be developed for those housing projects. But those are all gonna be, you know, there's gonna be licensees involved in those, in that scale. It's not gonna be the top subdivision.
Sounds good.
This board has done subdivisions of recent, the one up on, where upon Camp Sagamon. Excellent. Stuff was submitted.
Excellent, stuff was submitted, surveyed.
Yeah. Had everything we needed, it was. Well, they, they have to, uh, and the reason is that three years ago, the state required any, any transfer of title that has a description. Um, it has to have a licensed surveyor, so my approach, people come in, and I get this all the time, they come in with their hand sketches. I said, that's great, gives us a concept, I can give you an idea of whether this is going to fit the model, but can't take this as an application, you need to bring me in. A, a plot plan done by a surveyor, which is his first draft of a, of, of formal survey, and here's the reason why, he sent us the town requires it. But you won't be able to sell your property until you have a mile on it, you might as well come in with something readable to start with, right? And then, and, and then everybody's on the same page about this, literally, it's scratched up.
But my point is that this board could administer. The process. And we could understand it, we knew what we were doing, we were able to make a decision. And as Jeff just said, survey, you should know where your, your points are.
Yes.
Your bearings.
My part.
Okay.
Me too.
This is a sort of a moment to call vote, or what do we?
And that's what I'm wondering.
Yeah. Well, we gotta tell Logan what we're. We're gonna keep what we got.
Yeah.
Logan, we're gonna keep, well, we're not, we're not sure we're gonna keep what we got, but we're gonna put it to a vote.
All right, are, are you the, and what you're talking about is this, this section, you know, whether. Whether these things are going to be required to be depicted on a map or not in the. Yeah, in the, in the plot. Or as part of that application contents, yeah.
So, so I could ask a question here, may I? Um, so we're talking about the difference, I mean, maybe the distinction that to forget is there's a distinction between a minor subdivision and a major subdivision, both sub-. And typically, you, you know, you pick a number of lots. Where it stays minor and you don't have to go to the next level of detail. So this town has, has kind of done one lot per year, which is pretty unusual.
So this process, this process we're talking about. Um, would be only applying if it's not a simple subdivision. Um, so a si- a simple subdivision. Yeah, i- i- only if it's not a simple subdivision, it would have to go through. And that, and that's, that's referenced in, um, you know, the subsection, was it one oh, one oh one B two? It, it highlights all the, the sections that don't apply to simple subdivisions.
So.
Um.
Bring it to a vote? Of what we're putting in, did you? Put it together? More vote on it? Well, he's, he's just, uh, he was made a point and said, this is only relating.
To major. So major, which you have to define.
Which we have to define, we haven't defined it yet, so I, I, I spoke, he just clarified.
We did define it.
We did define it.
Did define it, yeah.
So it's, it's. Luckily enough. Um, this brings Pittsburgh up to what most towns that have subdivision regulations have been used to for a long time. But it does make the process more complicated and more expensive for the.
So is there anybody here that wants to change their wording? Because it sounded like most of us were okay to leave it.
Prolocation of fragile features?
Yes.
My only concern, or my only question is, why do we care if it's going to be developed or not, because it says in area to be developed? If they're subdividing. I don't think, this is for subdivision, it's not for development, so why do we have in area to be developed? That's the only thing I would scratch out of there.
Well, I, I'd like to clarify that.
No, I?
Because if you look at the definition of development, it includes parcelated land. So even if it's a subdivision. Where you're just identifying new plot sizes. It is under the definition, a version of development. So you may have to fine tune whether or not there's housing involved, and then the housing would trigger the next level of all this information. But. Let's say you've got a farm and they're just splitting up the farm, I don't have that ability.
Right, though. Anybody have any ideas what to do with it?
You could also kind of. Just to clarif- like clarify it, so it's clear to, to, to anyone in essentially. Something like, you know, in the, in the. Original parcel that's, that's being proposed to be subdivided. So if it's a ten acre parcel, it's being subdivided however many ways, we're talking about the entire ten acre parcel.
I think we should just leave it.
And you're saying not strike anything?
Right.
So put back in prominent nulls and ridge lines.
No, I don't.
I think you can take it low enough.
Okay.
Everyone wanted those up.
I just want to clarify, because you said it all back in, and we had already.
Good point, good point.
And this only relates to major subdivision, is that correct?
Well, I mean, if you're still using.
Yes, okay, the major subdivision is defined, because I wasn't like, yes.
Yes.
Define this what?
Uh.
It's.
No, no, I, I mean.
What's a major subdivision is the question, Jeff.
Yeah.
No, I'm saying you're interjecting here, that's our question that we have, do you, can you answer that as a zoning administrator?
Depends on the town, right now.
No, we're in Pittsburgh, so that's what we're.
So in Pittsburgh, a major subdivision is more than one lot every, every year. But that is really unusual, and, and what town, I will tell you what most towns do. Most towns will say, okay, we are going to take a base parcel. And we will allow that base parcel to be subdivided up to ten lots in ten years total, regardless of ownership. So, so let's say transfers titled. A couple of times in that ten years. Those subdivisions count regardless of, you know, it's not like Dan sells. Ten acres to the son, then the son splits it. And, and then. The next guy who gets part of that split gets ten subdivisions, wha- whatever, it's not like that, it's the total of subdivisions. Through the history of the property's, um, ownership. Um, and, and so. And there's a, a timeline where it resets the clock, usually it's ten, five to ten. And then after ten years, you get a clean slate and starts all over, so.
So to feed this back. It's not a major subdivision until it hits ten within a certain.
That's, that's, that's correct, I mean.
But that's not what we have in.
It's not what we had, we take, we fix that.
It, it, it's original zoning regulations, uh, subdivision regulations allows, allows for less than that, I think it's four lot, five year.
Yep.
Yeah, so.
Town to decide what's appropriate for the town, right?
Which we already have.
But we already have, and that's what I'm wondering what we arrived at, because.
Oh, you.
Yep.
This is what we came up with right here.
So the zoning administration, as zoning administrator shall have the authority to make a decision on a subdivision proposal. Where one lot per year per owner with no ownership restrictions. That results in a total of two conforming parcels, the property owner is limited to one subdivision application of the same property every three hundred and sixty-five days. Larger or more frequent subdivision applications are to be reviewed by the ZBA per the Pittsburgh zoning regulations.
So.
That's pretty much the definition.
Somebody comes in and says, I want to chop it into three pieces, it's major.
That's right.
Right.
That's right.
Okay, if they just divide it once, within one year.
One calendar year.
Minor.
It's minor.
Exactly.
Thank you. So if somewhere.
And that's what we decided the last time, but we haven't voted on that, that's what we're going to go with, but that's the change we made the last.
So if we have a father. Who's got to do estate planning.
Yep.
And he's got to subdivide off, and he's got four children. And they all get a lot, that's going to be a major subdivision, even though they're not building it, they're just acquiring it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, according to what we put in there in the beginning.
That's all, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, and just.
Really a major subdivision, in reality, right, I mean, in reality, it is, I mean, that's.
Right, because you could do ten lots in ten years.
Exactly.
With that scenario. Um, or, or even more, but, but here's the thing, that. Dad selling to the son is only one of the reasons to do a subdivision. And, and, uh, let's say you want to have someone who's a small-scale developer willing to build five houses on this parcel. And he's not going to do it because you've got this trigger that's going to make him do all the site work and the, you know. Mark out the roads and do the road profiles and all that stuff because he's doing more than one lot every year. He wants to do a five lot subdivision. And, and so he's going to be a major under the proposal that we've been talking about.
Right.
And it's going to discourage the small-scale subdivider. Now, if you're looking for the, you know, if you're looking, looking for the physicalities to come in and do a hundred lot subdivision. The odds are small that that will happen, I mean, I, we've got, we've got local contractors that have, you know, um. Financial ability to do a reasonable. Twenty-four lot subdivision and stay out of Act two fifty, you know, if it's in, if it's in approved district and it's got sewer and water and so on and so forth, under tier one B. But if you limit it with the, the one lot per year, he's going to get caught, so. I mean, it, it's pretty complicated when you think about how, how to. Make a break line between minor and major. I think the one lot per year. Works in a rural town with, with a very low level of subdivision history, but if you want to get out of that mode, you have to look, and I think. Be a little more generous on simplifying. Up to twenty-five lots or twenty-four lots, because, you know. If you look at the state statutes here, uh, they allow up to fifty lots under ten, in certain circumstances.
Yep.
Yeah, it's really the.
That will come into play.
It will come into.
That statute, so.
Now, when you talk about five lots, you don't need to map out every zone and so on and so forth, but if you're talking about. Four lots, yeah, there's an, there's stormwater gets involved. So you're going to have to have stormwater plant, all, and all of these things kind of start to. Roll down the hill in, in, in like an avalanche, it gets bigger as you get down toward the coal, and, uh. And so you gotta hit a sweet spot here, I don't, I don't know what to recommend.
Um, well, my point is, is we're sitting here, we're getting educated, we're listening to you, we're listening to Logan. But yet it's the townspeople, they've got to be able to understand this. And.
And then they're not gonna.
They're not going to, exactly, and I don't know where they're coming from. And as a forty-year-old member of the planning commission that used to go out and knock on doors, we'd all take a section of town. When we were doing these regulations, so. How is the nine unit in five years on the chopping block, is that what you were just saying? In certain areas, you can do twenty-four lots without going through Act two fifty, I find that. Is that happening, is that real?
It is in Chittenden County, uh, I mean, I don't know if it'll have, in Assit County.
I. Well, what I'm just saying currently. I can't, I can't. Subdivide. Nine lots inside of five years without going through Act two fifty.
Unless, uh, unless you, unless you're, unless you're into the loopholes of one eighty-one and one forty-seven.
Okay.
If you're out in the country, you're on a septic system, even then, you know, the, if, one eighty-one allows for certain se- common septic system development. But, but, uh.
More intense, similar to what it would be. Right, and then, and, and it's, and it's being reviewed now.
Yeah.
I was told by an attorney, so.
I, I would say as, as a developer, the cost of a, a common septic field that would accommodate. Twenty-five houses, it'll be cheaper to run sewer and water.
Yeah, I mean, this is just, this is just the introduction, if you had to go through Act two fifty for nine lots, this is. This is something that would be baked in in spades with the longer. But I thought we were going to try to become a ten-acre town instead of a one-acre town, keep two fifty out, that's. What I thought the whole thrust of this was.
I, I, I haven't heard the conversation of, about that, I'm glad to hear you brought that up, Rick, because I was under the understanding, though, part of the major objective of this rewrite. Is to. Go to a development review board system and get a ten-acre status with the town, I mean, there's.
That's what we're doing.
I, I can give you a real-life example.
That's what I thought we were supposed to be doing.
That's what we told the select board we were doing.
Yes, and, and, and that is, that's a very simple way to at least increase your ability. To limit Act two fifty to, you know, ten lots is where they take jurisdiction.
Yes.
So ten lots within five years, so, so. And that's a, it's proven to be a fairly acceptable and reasonable approach that there's. I don't think.
Does West Rutland do that? Does Brandon do that? Does Hubbardton do that?
A ten-acre town, Brandon is a ten-acre town.
Hubbardton? Who, Hubbardton?
Hubbardton is a ten-acre town.
Yes, so we got Chittenden. Chittenden, Rutland Town around us, they do not have.
Nope.
Okay, what about Proctor?
Proctor, I think is a ten-acre town.
Proctor has. Proctor's a one acre. Proctor's a one acre town, they're, they're, they're having very similar conversations to, to you all, they're, we're going to be working with them on getting subdivision bylaws, which is why they're not. A ten-acre town, and they're a one acre town.
Okay, so we got three towns around us that aren't.
And this is why you wrote DRB all through this.
Well, yeah, that was the assumption, when I, when I sent those notes about, you know, my comments on, on the two thousand and nineteen version. Um, my assumption was that the development review board approach was going to be part parcel.
But I thought Logan said we could keep the zoning board, that's where.
You, you, yeah, yeah, and just to clarify, you do not, I, I triple-checked the law, you are not required to make a development review board, there are towns that do it without it. What is, in order to become a ten-acre town, what is required, I'm looking at something right from actually. The State of Vermont Land Use Review Board, you got to have permanent zoning and subdivision bylaws. That is what is required to be a ten-acre town, and you can have, you can have zoning and subdivision bylaws. Without a development review board, and there are towns in our region that do so. Um.
So do you know how the, how this conception has been generated? So what's this?
Just like you saying that Logan Solomon was no longer working for the state, someone said an inaccurate statement, okay?
I think it's deeper.
No, I'm, no, I'm serious, Jeff, because we sit back here and I take this pretty seriously, so do a lot of the other members, all the members. And that's how, that's how these things get started, we need to speak to someone that.
Yeah, that's got to check the rule.
Yeah.
Logan's still on, he just took his. Emraff, we lost him.
Probably ran.
Um. Sorry about that, I had a cat on my screen. It's okay.
And I think it was decided way back when they didn't want to go to this particular, we kept that we were going to keep the zoning board. Because of the familiarity with the regulations.
We had that.
Going ten-acre town, but not DRB.
Correct.
So then Logan needs, where I think we changed it throughout to say DRB.
No, we changed it all to say ZBA.
Yeah.
We're all, it used to be DRB because it was Brandon's, and Brandon was DRB, we switched it to, we switched it to ZBA.
Very confused.
We got it now, yeah, okay. Okay, so.
Because the statute used, used to specifically say that if you did that, that you did away with the zoning ZBA, and you created the DRB.
It did.
But that's changed. Yeah.
Should we get back to the highlighted language and try to get past that, please?
But these things.
Let's take out prominent nulls and ridge lines and otherwise leave it alone. Anyone have an objection to that?
I say two, and if we have to amend it later on, if it's a problem, we'll deal with it then.
Deal with it when the time comes. Does that mean we go to the next highlighted?
You got that, Logan? Do we have to make?
He's good, yep.
We did it last time.
I know, but I want to make sure we're doing it. As we went. Let's just do it when we get to the end.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, when we get this finally done, we'll all make a vote on accepting it, it's final.
A list of the changes.
Yep. Yeah, and Logan's. Yeah, he's going to give us one of these with no yellow, and once we get that, we can vote on that.
Well, we've got these, yeah, and have a list with the changes.
Yeah.
Which you got.
Does that mean we're on page ten?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we got to get off four and get on ten. Okay. Okay. You want to look? No, a lot of them, I think I made them. Just make sure I, the provision, or I go home.
Yes.
Even though it's.
So again, here we're in a major subdivision criteria, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
And really, it's a question of, um. You know, the state statutes requiring standards for protecting natural cultural resources and preserving open spaces appropriate for the municipality, so there's. Really just a question of what. What does that look like in the context of Pittsburgh? Um, and, yeah.
What's a cultural resource, please?
Like the Pittsburgh Village Town. Right?
Okay.
Well, the. Oh, yeah, the. The intent typically is that those sort of, those sort of things are, are identified in the town plan is usually the. Logic there of, um. Like, okay, the town plan spells out, this is a cultural resource that we want to protect. Um, you know, like the, the town office is a cultural resource that's, you know, a public space where folks can gather, um, for example. Um, but, you know, cultural resources or whatever the community really. Can define them as, I think it's another one of those things that is. Different in different communities and.
But owned by the town. But owned by the town. Well, why wouldn't it be?
Historic places, we don't own the library.
Yeah, but they're under historical register, that's a different, I'm talking a cultural resource that he mentioned, that mentions historic, right?
Yeah, historical.
Historic or cultural.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Logan, the language that you wrote out for Jay, I think you've said in your comment that that is pretty much like the minimum language. In other words, if you took things out of that, we would no longer be meeting the state standard?
I wouldn't go that far. Um, I, you know, I was just really, um, I thought that this was an example of, you know, something that that is a clear demonstration of, okay, we have standards for for protecting natural cultural resources that are identified.
Necessary.
Yes, some something there, whatever that something is, is as appropriate for the municipality, to quote the law.
Sorry. Does anyone?
I just wanted to give an example for you.
We should look at his language and see if we wanna change it. Does anyone have anything about that?
That's why I was asking about cultural resources. It's, I know what natural resources are, historical resources are.
I would say a cultural resource, like a historic resource, I I think communities often think of them as 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 part of a cultural resource.
Mention a floodplain.
Because we know it.
No, we we know.
We have a whole section in the back of our zone.
Not very ambiguous.
I guess that was a bad example. In that last section. I'm just saying, I don't have a definition section.
Well, that's, that was my argument from the beginning, is that we need to get definitions to this, because I know that there's gonna be issues down the road, because that's already happening in the select board meetings, they're having issues with not definitions being spelt out perfectly in our zoning.
Logan, do other towns have the definition section, kinda like what Chuck is describing?
You could, you could have a, some towns, actually, I'm not sure if that's true for subdivision, but I I, you can have a definition section specific to the subdivision addendum. Yep, and and or you could have, um, it adding definitions to your current definition section, you know, in your zoning regulations and just spelling out that these these def- these definitions also apply to the subdivision regulations. But it it is good practice, you know, definitions really can make the regulations often, because then it's, it's really clear on what exactly we're talking about in the context of the regulations, which is why, you know, earlier I mentioned prominent nulls, because like you'd wanna define that term if you keep it. Which we're not, but you get that, you get that idea.
You know what's really unfortunate about this is we use terms and terminology that the people in this town, the people of this planning commission don't even know the definition and we're searching for it. I just Googled it because I have, happen to have that.
I don't have a problem with the rest of it, I just had a.
But I agree, Mike, here's cultural resources according to Google, and I'm just, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, because I don't wanna pick. Cultural resources either physical and intangible aspects of a culture that holds significance for a community, including historical sites, artifacts, traditions, and beliefs. They represent evidence of past human activity and are considered non-renewable, making their preservation crucial for understanding the past and present. Then there's more details on tangible resources, and then there's intangible resources. Tangible resources, I'm just gonna skim it, include archaeological sites, historic building structures, landscapes, and objects like tools, pottery, and artwork. They encompass cultural practices, tradition, knowledge systems, oral histories, and spiritual beliefs that are important to a culture. We've got Fort Vengeance up there. That, to me, would be a cultural, that's, that's part of the reason that we're here. I don't know, that's the first one that popped.
You have Fort Vengeance, you've got the ice caves, technically your church buildings or the cemeteries around them are all a cultural site in town.
And what's clustering in there?
In the definition?
Yeah.
Or not definite, on page ten.
That was the clustering of the buildings, like if, if you had like a big subdivision, like in a U, you know, you're clustering your buildings around this open area, I believe is what we discussed last meeting or the meeting before. I don't know, my meetings bunt together, sorry.
I covered pages, there are some other things.
Okay, so we have designed the clustering.
Should we say clustering buildings, because it is actually hard to understand what that means, but no. Is that, that's what you're, what it means, right?
As far as I'm, Logan, am I right or am I off?
Nope, you're totally right, and we can add clustering buildings, that doesn't, you know. Yep.
Right, that's easier to understand.
Makes it very.
Yeah.
Agree. How about our alternate over there, being awful quiet?
I, can I make a comment?
Yes.
So when we do policies and ordinances for the town, almost every single one of them has a definition section. So either in the zoning, as we're redoing that, maybe we add some of these in on what we're meaning for definitions, or we do it just for the subdivisions and have a definition section. I mean, like our junk ordinance, it describes exactly what a junk vehicle is. And then it, like, what a tenant is, what a leaseholder, you know, as examples. And it just makes it easier so that the common person reading it, if they get to that, they could say, I don't know what that is, flip to the definitions and it's right there. It's like the first.
That makes sense.
If Sony does that, it's in the zoning.
So, I honestly haven't looked through zoning a whole lot, but I believe there is a definition section. So maybe we look at the zoning definition section and say, we need to tweak this to add some of our subdivision, because the subdivision's an appendix of the zoning regs, so it still is all one cohesive document in the end. But all the definitions are laid out, so the common person looking can say, I don't know what a cultural site is, we can go to the definitions, there's cultural site, boom, it has the description.
We do this. Do we have to have definitions for a whole bunch in this document?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're gonna have.
And who's gonna do the definition?
Hold on a second, because we, we had this issue when we wrote the zoning. There is a separate section for telecommunications definitions. And then we have definitions, when you get into our articles, down through, you have flood hazard. And then we have it, so my question is, did we decide whether this was gonna be a standalone?
We said it was gonna be an offender.
An appendix. Same, okay, the same as, did we, is everybody's memory good with that? So I don't see why we can't use it the same way that we did Article twenty in our current zoning page sixty-one as definitions for zone. Then we have an attachment, flood hazard area regulations, I guess this would become attachment one. And then we'd have to make our subdivision regulations attachment two, it's gonna be an attachment. And then we would have definitions for attachment two.
Within attachment two?
Yes. Because.
So we need to identify which terms in our new work need to be defined.
Yeah.
Subdivision regulation.
So to speed up time, Logan, you took this out of Brandon, does Brandon have definitions in there?
They, they use their, uh, they don't, they put it as a part of the larger definition section for the whole zoning. Um, so we can, we can make though a subsection, you know, in this, or section, sorry, in this, this attachment that is definitions pertaining to the subdivision, um, you know, attachments. And we can define the term subdivision and, you know, some of these other terms, like cultural sites or, um.
Well, can we shift? Would you be willing to to help us out on this and get the?
Yeah, totally.
Okay.
Wanna ask the guy who messes it work with definitions that question? I mean, Logan asked to do it because it's part of his job too, and he does it for more towns than I do. But there's two ways to do the definitions, you either attach it like telecommunications, you put the definitions right with the telecommunications.
That's what I just said, Jeff.
Okay, or you do it like you, like Ann suggested, you have one definition section that has three chapters. One for zoning, one for telecommunications, one for flood. Now, the important part about definitions is that zoning makes, the definitions make for good regulation. But the point is, is for every use that you have in your, or every, every condition that you have in your zoning regulation, there should be a definition in the definition section. And in, let's take an, a real life.
Jeff, excuse me, can we just stick with what we're doing now? You always have this pet peeve and you bring the zoning into it, we're not working on that right now. We're trying to get across this and we've been on it for an hour. I just, I don't see the, it's not the time.
The, the current zoning regulations in the town of Pittsburgh zoning are inadequate to the state.
And we know, you've said that several times. And as a zoning board member, I don't agree. Find very easy to work with. Not that anything can't be changed or suggested to change, and you did that while we amended our zone.
You did. We should come back to that discussion.
That'll be another thing.
Where the definitions should be.
Yeah, I just think you should keep them in the adjustments, because actually we're going to telecommunications. We go specifically to that section, and we're dealing only with that section.
Thank you, Donna. Thank you, Lance. Well, I was, I was referring to you.
One other thing I'd like to circle back to, maybe having the agenda for the next meeting. Logan, a couple of months ago, we were chatting about Vermont. Um, let me see if I can say this way. A while ago, you laid up two pieces of paper. One was compulsory Vermont statutes. For zoning. The other one is what Vermont would like this to. But a couple of months ago, you said there were steps that we could take to mitigate necessary compulsory policies that were gonna be implemented by the state on the town plan. I would like to circle back to that if you're gonna be at the next meeting.
Yep, yeah, absolutely.
I think Rob touched upon it, I touched upon it, I just don't want it to slide off the radar while we're actually, you know, zoning, if there are things that maybe this town doesn't wanna do that the state wants us to do. We have this ways to combat that, if it does work, um, to, uh, mitigate some of those requirements, I think we're all used.
Yeah, and I, um, you know, there's, there's, essentially what it was, was kind of language, um, around, you know, some of these, these concerns of, okay, the State of Vermont is requiring the zoning to allow for X, Y, and Z. Um, then there are concerns about, hey, since we're allowing for X, Y, and Z, we're worried about this, this impact, that impact, and that results from this. I mean, so what, what, essentially what, what I was proposing was kind of, you know, developing review processes, that kind of, um, review for those sort of impacts, um, and setting it up in a way that it gives the town some control to be able to, to mitigate those, those, those concerns that the community has.
Nice, we're, I think we're gonna, I would like to see it on the agenda for the next meeting, I don't wanna stop the good progress that we're making. But, um, maybe we can touch upon this next meeting.
Yes, exactly. What is it? Any one on the agenda?
Mitigate the state standards, yes.
And it might just be also a broader conversation of shifting, you know, our focus from the subdivision document to, um, the zoning document. I'm using that term just to not get people confused, but looking at the actual zoning. Um, and, you know, what would need to change in order for these state requirements, um, and then also, you know, the exact mitigating provisions that we're talking about. And I also, and I'll send this as something, as this following up, as I kind of went ahead, um, and started, and I went through the, the zoning, um, and input the sort of changes, um, in order, and, and certain points for discussion in a future meeting, um, you know, and that will need to be discussed ultimately, whenever, um, about, you know, these specific provisions and, and where they could go, and, and, you know, these sort of community concerns and how to address them in the regulations. Um, and I also was able to, when I was reviewing Jeff's, um, feedback, I was able to also input, um, input everything that Jeff was also, um, you know, request, you know, requesting that the, that there was discussion about and suggesting changes on. So I kinda have a, a starting point for us to start working through on the actual zoning, zoning language.
Probably, we all want a copy of that for when we start going over the zoning, which I thought we might be diving into today, but I wouldn't wanna dive into it without.
No, exactly.
Describe. So maybe we better, the next meeting.
Yeah, I agree.
Cause I have been reading through the zoning, so that I can try to find issues as well.
But having those highlighted.
Yeah.
So much easier.
Definitely, so we're not gonna get into that tonight, I think.
Right.
Yeah.
But that's gonna be on the agenda for.
And so I'll definitely make sure to send that out to everyone, um, after this meeting.
This are all yours and all of us are some years.
I've been wanting to send the agenda for the last couple, so I'm excited.
Or, so, so we added the word buildings to the highlighted language on page ten? Is there anything else someone thought would clarify that? If it's okay to get back to that?
I think one piece that was also mentioned, I think maybe, I don't remember who mentioned it, was, um, you know, wherever the definitions live, uh, maybe is another discussion, but having some sort of definition for the term of cultural sites, and maybe giving some examples that were, were mentioned by folks. If that term is gonna be used.
I have it in my notes, Logan.
Oh, great.
We also, does wetlands defined in zoning? I don't think so.
I think.
You could also say, you could also just add.
Wetlands are determined and defined by state and federal regulations.
Those are pretty codified.
Yeah.
Yeah, because when we do this, we send this up to the Department of Housing to maybe do it, and it isn't right, it gets sent back and we correct it.
They enjoy that.
If you wanna look at some updated zoning regulation, definition sections, uh, look at Pauling, look at Brandon, West Rutland. Those three towns have updated examples of.
Right, but I think we're gonna get Logan to make up some definitions, and then we'll look at that and keep it simple, so we don't have other stuff coming out. He's gonna go through and the words that he feels needs definitions, get us that information. We can look at that and.
But since we're not jumping into zoning today, should we have the discussion about where the definition section should be? Right now, it's separated between, there's a telecommunications part, there's like another part on page sixty-one. And some towns are putting all their definitions together, and since what we're doing is gonna be an appendix, maybe it's time to put all of our definitions together, or maybe it's not, but.
I don't wanna oversimplify it, but it's called a glossary, and it's on the back of a lot of major documents. So it's a glossary, is what we're all.
Yeah, well, that's another way to do it.
Yeah, it's commonly done.
Yes, I, I know what a glossary.
I honestly can't.
Well, we haven't, we haven't mentioned it.
Everything around it.
These sort of like.
I have not seen the glossary in, in zoning regulations. I've seen, I've seen a definition, a def. Definition sheet, but not a glossary of like this term is used on this page.
But I can tell you, we're gonna have a whole bunch. If you take a look at this, from our perspective as a zoning board member, things like personal computers and personal wireless service, pre-existing towers, roof or building mount, radio plot, FCC, frequency, GHC, gigahertz, hertz, on and on and on, it's nice having all of these that refer to telecommunications with the telecommunications appendix. And I personally think we should go to the next appendix. We have a appendix one, we go to appendix two with the definitions behind it.
With this document, we, we make a definition that goes with this.
Yes.
Anything that needs. Here, we just tie with it.
Yeah, but, yeah, and here's how our definitions are currently, they're right back to back.
Right.
Yeah. I didn't realize that.
Yeah, so twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, or twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two.
So, so one thing you'll see that's also the modern definitions, and I mean, not in like in the last five years, is that, uh, when you have a definition, it'll refer in paragraphs to the section that's applicable. So it'll say definition for, um, bed and breakfast, and it'll say refer to section. And, and so you know what page to flip to, or when you're in reading the bed, the bed and breakfast section, you know that in definitions, it's there, so.
I just like having them all together, which we do have. But it sounds like Logan's gonna help us get started on identifying terms from the subdivision regulations.
Yeah, see what he comes up with, and that's gonna make.
And attach it right to it.
Communications, right?
Cause telecommunications is twenty-one, XXI. And there's six pages there.
Yeah.
So like when we have a hearing and the guys come in, we're not going through, we're doing it with telecommunications. We're in that.
Makes sense, right in there.
Good reason, yeah.
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 And so, am, did I hear correctly that the consensus was that you're wanna add another article? So like it would be after article XXI telecommunications definitions, the next article would be subdivision definitions. Am I hearing that right?
We're leaning toward.
Yeah, I think that's gonna make it easier for everybody.
Continue to discuss.
So what I'm actually gonna do is, is then in that case, when I send, um, the draft that I mentioned to everyone. I'm gonna have a placeholder for that article I just mentioned. So a new article, and then I'll also have the subdivision appendix as well. So it'll all be together in one big document. Um, like it would be.
That's easy.
When it's, yeah. Great.
Yeah, I think that's the way to do it.
So what are we doing now?
Are we done discussing the second highlighted language on page ten?
Yeah, I believe so. And we're not voting on it, but we're saying we're striking prominent walls and ridges.
Well, that was.
And then adding.
That was page four.
Right, yeah, but I wanna make sure we don't forget that.
Okay.
Yeah, buildings on the other.
Adding buildings, yep.
You got all that, Logan? Yep, okay.
Well, yeah, where does that leave us then?
Well, I, we're gonna keep working on this, but we're not going into the zoning document.
Next time.
Next time.
Okay, um, so I guess we're moving on to new business?
Oh, sorry, one last thing. So Logan, can you send us, um, you had yours and Jeff's comments that sort of.
That's what he's sending us.
It's all in one document. Um, yeah, so I, cause it was easier for me to be able to say, okay, um, you know, this is Jeff's comment. I don't have to look at Jeff's document anymore. I'll just put it all in this document. And then it's all together. Um, so me and Jeff's comments will all be in one, one document. Uh, the one thing to just note is that where Jeff wrote DRB, I did not include that. That is the one exception. Um, because we had already talked about the town wasn't gonna have a DRB.
ZBA.
But if that's something that, just for the record, if that's something that ends up changing for some reason or whatever, that's a very easy fix to make in the document.
Sure.
Um, so.
Great.
Okay, so we got our agenda here. Thank you, Logan. Thank you, Logan.
Yeah, thank you, everyone.
And you're gonna come to our, oh, you're gonna come to our next meeting.
Yep, yeah, actually, can I just, I just wanna make sure I have that date right. The next meeting would be the last, it's the last Thursday this month.
It would be, we stepped. July twenty-fourth would be the fourth Thursday.
Yep, six thirty, right?
Yes. What day would, would it be?
July twenty-fourth.
Wouldn't be the pretty perfect.
No, it's four, so.
Four, okay, we're gonna have five Thursdays in July. Is it really?
Yep, I, I got that on my calendar, yeah.
All right. I believe in that. July twenty-fourth, six thirty. Thank you.
Yep, yeah, thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you, Logan.
Logan.
So then, under new business, the next, next thing is, uh, discussion, I hear, for the business.
That was the time?
Well, we've got tier one, that tier one versus.
Not yet.
Tier one B.
I'm at the end of the business.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So tier, tier one A versus tier one B?
This is more Rick than me, I think. We've, do you want me to start the conversation? So Rick and I have had a friendly debate about whether we should be tier one A or one B. Um, with, so I went on the land use review boards. Website to find what tier one A guidelines were, and I emailed it to Rick. Um, right now, tier one A criteria. A municipal plan that is approved in accordance with twenty-four VSA, section forty-three fifty. Uh, B, the boundaries are consistent with downtown or village centers and planned growth areas as defined in twenty-four VSA, section forty-three, forty-eight. A twelve and an approved regional future land use map with any minor amendments. Right now, Regional Planning Commission is still working on our mapping. Um, I brought to their attention where all of our water lines were for town. They didn't realize how expansive our water system is. Um, so they're looking at that, and we may have a larger planned growth area than they had originally anticipated. Uh, the municipality has adopted flood hazard and river corridor bylaws. This is something we don't have yet. Applicable to the entire municipality that are consistent with or stronger than the standards established pursuant to subsection seven fifty-five B. Of this title flood hazard and subsection fourteen twenty-eight B of this title river corridor. Um, or the proposed tier one A area excludes the flood hazard areas and river corridor. D, the municipality has adopted permanent zoning and subdivision bylaws that do not include broad exemptions that include significant private or public land development. From requiring municipal land use permit. E, the municipality has permanent land development regulations for the tier one A area that further. The smart growth principles of twenty-four VSA, chapter seventy-six A. Adequately regulate the physical form and scale of development. Provide reasonable provision for a portion of the areas with sewer and water to allow at least four stories and conform to the guidelines established by the board. And then F, I'm skipping a bunch of the stuff, cause you can get into the details if we want to. Uh, the tier one A area is compatible with the character of adjacent national register historic districts, national or state register historic sites. And other significant cultural and natural resources identified by local or state government. G, the municipality has identified and planned for the maintenance of significant natural communities, rare, threatened, and endangered species. Located in the tier one A area or excluded those areas from the tier one A area. H, public water and wastewater systems or planned improvements have the capacity to support additional development within the tier one A area. Right now, we have. Growth capacity in water and wastewater both. I had another conversation with Sean recently about that. I, municipal staff adequate to support coordinated, comprehensive, and capital planning. Development review and zoning administration in the tier one A area. I think that's all of the things. We're missing the river corridor.
Well, it has been mapped by Rutland Regional. When we did our plan, we elected not to put them in. Because at the time I was working with Steve Shields down there, just on H. You read public water and wastewater systems, planned improvements have capacity to support additional development in the tier one area, section twenty-nine. And Act one eighty-one also requires the board to create guidelines for tier one A, especially for evaluating.
Infrastructure.
That's important. But.
What, what are we discussing exactly?
Tier one A and tier one B.
Tier one A versus tier one B is depending upon how much control we want and how much, uh, we want Act two fifty to come in and take. Over.
And one A, we have more local control?
Right.
And it's one of the two considered more urban than the other? I'm trying to tell the difference from what you're saying.
According to Regional Planning Commission, when we, I go to the Board of Commissioners meetings. Right now, only Rutland City and one other town qualify for one A. Status because they have their river corridors, policies and everything in place. Almost all other. Towns that have zoning, cause there's a few towns that don't have zoning. Um, anyone else who has zoning will qualify for tier one B. If you don't have zoning, you're gonna fall into tiers two or three.
Which is below.
Which is below, which means Act two fifty is gonna come into play in those towns quite significantly compared to.
Your one A or one B, you're doing better with two fifty.
Right, from what I'm understanding, tier one A gives us the ten acre exemption, makes us a ten acre town. Tier one B, we're not a ten acre town. That was.
I, no, I believe.
Didn't was tier one B, she said.
No, I believe that, I believe ten acre town comes into play if you're a B or an A.
Okay, you're sure about that because that isn't.
Cause I thought, I went to the training and it was, history was gonna be tier one B.
We, we have tier one B, the only thing that made it so that we couldn't have A was we don't have the river corridors and.
The planning, the staff.
The staff.
The staff.
Because I believe, and I'd have to get into the weeds more, has a full-time staff. We don't have a full-time zoning staff here. We have a part-time zoning staff.
And you need the staff to be one A.
Yeah, so.
Cause of all the riggers.
We don't have the staff, so we're not talking about one A.
Well, we're debating one A, one B.
What, what's the advantages and disadvantages that you think? From being one A to one B? I mean, is it worth us trying to get a staff together to become one A?
Well, what I was trying to look at is, is to what the requirements are gonna be because. The way that I first started looking at it, and I went under the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission. Because the Regional Planning Commission is the one that has to approve it. But in this letter that I, uh, rep, or in this memorandum to the land use review, the land use review board. So-called LRB. Um. It says that they will not start doing this until. I believe it's January.
It's gonna be beyond January.
In twenty twenty-six.
It's gonna be on January twenty twenty.
Well, just to give it a real quick summary, and I hope I, I don't misspeak here.
It's on YouTube.
The Land Use Review Board will review applications for tier one A status from the municipalities as of January one, twenty twenty-six. My, when I first spoke with these people about it. I was under the understanding that we had to be tier one A to be ten acre exempt. And if you go, yeah, I know, Donnie, you're saying no, but I have read the documentation, which was part of Act one eighty-one or whatever this was under. So. This is very confusing because this letter that Sarah had, who's a member of the LRB. Dated April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, said over the course of the two meetings, March twenty-sixth and. April third, the board considered option for guidance. This memo incorporates discussions. And direction provided by the board at these meetings. It is requested that the board approve this memo at the April twenty-first meeting. Well, the date says this memorandum is April twenty-five, and she's talking about four days. Before this memorandum, that doesn't make any sense. So obviously, there's a typo or error there. But then they say draft guidance will be developed with the staff and brought back to the board for consideration in July. We've already dealt with the LRB. They're, they're, they have a tremendous workload. I don't know how they're gonna do it because the LRB is gonna have to determine every status. Of every municipality, whether you're a tier one A or tier, tier one B. So. I wanna make sure, and wish Logan was still on, or if we check. That is in fact, if we go with tier one B, because we're doing these subdivision regulations.
You can see the whole training online under Rutland Regional Plan Commission.
Okay, but what's this stat right here? You go to the regional, I printed this off. This is the, this is the future land use map that was developed by the Rutland Regional Planning Commission.
About one A and one B.
Yeah, and that's what I'm talking about, is as to whether we're defined.
But Rick, remember Dan said.
There, so.
Only towns that qualify for one A currently, and she said like Rutland City and stuff, there's ten acre towns all around us, Brandon. Hubbardton.
Currently.
Yeah.
And they're. So we're adopting subdivision regulations. We gotta make sure that our regulations. Are going to meet the standard for ten acre town, whether it's A or B. I won't, I'm not sure.
Do have to do that, yes.
Yeah.
But I think one A or one B.
So.
Fit the bill.
According to my conversations with both Logan and Devon about. What we need to be a tier one B, and I will verify that it'll make us a ten acre town. Cause as far as I understand, if we would be a ten acre town under one B, which is why they're pushing so many. Of the communities to get to the standards of one B is that we'd be ten acre town, Act two fifty. Would be exempt in those planned growth and village growth areas and village areas. That's why they're redoing the map. We, the select board had a meeting to look at the map. We came up with an entire list of changes that needed to be made. I've been going back and forth with Logan. I actually took one of our maps, highlighted all of the water lines, took it back to him and he's reviewing that and trying to change it. He's come back with me with a couple of questions and that kind of thing, because Regional Planning Commission didn't realize how extensive. And I told him, I said, I'm only mapping water, I'm not mapping sewer because. Uh, you can overlay the septic, uh, regulations. Soil types, whatever, so as long as they have the water and they have those septic overlays. It would be able to be in those planned growth areas. And a lot of the place, obviously where we have water lines, people have built houses, so they obviously have septic systems out on West Creek Road, et cetera, so.
Right, but they said in what you sent me, that they have to overlay the map. The future land use map on existing structures that we have in place now.
And that's what they're working on, and we, cause we had the discussion about Plains Road. The way it was in our zoning regs versus the way it was gonna overlay on there because. Somehow in our zoning regs at one point, it was labeled as a rural classification for Plains Road. But we have municipal water and sewer on part of it, and then just water on part of it. So they can change it to being a planned growth area due to the fact that it has the municipal.
But then how will this classification change in the zoning? Cause right now, so many feet from Route seven is commercial, and then the rest of Plains Road is rural.
But rural now is your agricultural, your.
No, I'm talking about our, our zoning map. It says rural, it's a rural district.
Right.
Yeah.
But that might change.
But we.
Oh, we'll have to change our map, or we'll have to change our designation and all our zoning that goes, that would be applicable to.
We might, it, I told you last time you were here, I don't think the beginning of Plains Road feels rural. It feels more like in terms of Pittsburgh, it feels more.
Right, but I'm saying it's in the village where you.
Village.
Yeah.
Where it starts.
Where you come in, it's defined as so many feet is commercial within the village. And then from that point on, the, the area that we're talking here, this is rural, right on the map.
But would it be a planned growth area if it was rural?
Well, this is something new that I've heard, and that's why I was asking Donna.
So, right now, in Pittsburgh zoning regulations as they stand right now, it's rural.
Except six hundred feet, right, Jeff?
No.
No, that's on the commercial one, so.
Remember, the village section comes up too, uh, and then, I, I, where's, where's the village section stop?
Village section stops at Winning Image.
So from Winning Image north, six hundred feet from the center line of the highway is commercial.
So it is six hundred feet coming into.
But, yeah, where, where you start is the question.
Right.
Okay, so now, 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 yeah, this is, so yeah, the intersection of Plains Road with, with Route. The intersection of Plains Road with Route seven is the start of the commercial zoning district.
Right.
I could check that.
Right, I agree, but my, my thought, my point, my thing is, is when I saw this future land use map from Rutland Regional. We haven't heard anything from you on it, Donna, right? That they'd extended it?
Extended it?
Yeah.
No, but I sent out an email saying how that Ann was updating. Did you get my email?
I don't know, just.
Yeah, this came off of the select board beginning last night, that they were, there were issues.
Right, but I don't remember, my point is, I don't remember having any discussion at the Pittsburgh Planning Commission. About anything about the future land use map prepared by the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, and I went on the website, and this is what. Was printed, and I was like, boy, it's funny, Donna hasn't said anything about it.
I've mentioned it several times in this meeting that we were having on the select board agenda. If anyone wanted to attend. We, we had Regional Planning Commission come in, give a whole presentation, and then we had a mapping one. And mappings was, has been on the select board agenda three times.
Do you guys recall that?
Sounds familiar.
You, you recall, Mike, Chuckie, remember?
I, we talked about how Plains Road is rural, but it doesn't seem that way.
That was at the last meeting though.
That was.
That has been multiple meetings. At the last meeting.
No, this map was.
He first talked to us about saying that there was an advantage, we needed to possibly make a change. And that's why I said, what's the advantage of making the change or the disadvantage?
Cause I had sent to everybody, the select board and the planning commission, the whole packet that. Regional Planning Commission had sent us saying that they were coming to do the presentation, and in there was that land use map.
And they did a presentation to us or the select board?
Select board, they supposed to do it to select board.
Well, we didn't get it. I don't know why you wouldn't come to the planning commission.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Well, generally, the towns have been doing a joint meeting for.
Yeah, well, I just missed it, and so.
So there is a great distinction to make. The zoning map is not the same as the virtual, future land use map.
I understand that.
So I, I don't want people to think. So I, I don't want people to think that when you have the zoning map and you adopt whatever tier one or tier two. Then all of a sudden, the zoning map is gonna change. It's not, it's gonna stay the zoning map. There's gonna be a use map that's, you know, eventually gonna. Update, right? But I don't, I don't think there's an, uh, when, when you adopt tier one or two, tier two, the zoning map doesn't change instantly, does it? I don't think it does.
All that, so with the paperwork that we have to fill out for real Regional Planning Commission. And the select board has to verify for tier one B designation, and I can go get it off my desk, so I have it on there, that. The town has subdivision bylaws, and when they were approved, which right now ours are pending. That we have zoning regulations, they were approved in what date? Right now ours are twenty nineteen, I think, is what it says on it. But those are being worked on, and then you have to have a town plan, which we have, but it's the next thing to be worked on, so we have three different.
So.
Pieces of that.
Addresses subjects or topics like setbacks and coverage and so on, but the future land use map doesn't address. So there's two different purposes for the maps.
Well, I thought in our zoning that we had a future land use map.
You do, we've always had.
Okay, so that's my point. The planning commission prepares a map. And we do the future land use map, and last time it was contentious, when we went to the. Uh, Rutland Regional to get it approved. So, I'm just, I missed it, and I think other people in here missed it too, I'm just.
Oh, I'm still arguing back and forth with planning commission about the land use map, because it's not the way the board, the select board wants it. And it's missing information.
Have you got any input from the Pittsburgh Planning Commission?
No, but I've told you guys when they were coming, and I told you it was on.
Okay, well, I missed it, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, I mean, you can go back.
I don't know why they shouldn't come to our meeting.
That's right, I don't understand.
Cars of the planning commission. If you go into title twenty-four, it's all defined in there.
The select board, I think, has got enough on their plate to do with where that should have been presented to us, and then we should have presented. Supposedly this board is for.
When we present an amendment to the zoning, or we present a revised town plan, we prepare that document. We have our hearings. Then it goes to the select board, kind of going around the, kind of got the cart before.
This was that, this was.
We've had no discussion about it. And I won't say, that enough. All this stuff disappears. What is, what's the next step in this discussion?
I will verify with Regional Planning Commission that tier one B will give us the ten acre town designation.
Thank you.
Yes. Update on the alternate position?
Yeah, see what's approved last night, at the select works.
Congratulations. So the next time you get to sit with us. Awesome. Um, so, we scheduled the date for the next meeting.
Before you do that. Did, did you send an email saying Gordon had been, had been moved up from all, a full-time member, right? Okay, so that's.
Does he know?
He's got the email I sent him.
Yeah, well, I like Kevin's, I did, I did speak to him. I did speak to him, like I said at the last meeting, he said he wanted to stay on.
Okay.
And so I conveyed that to Kevin.
And I called him too, yeah.
And I guess from what Kevin told me, or no, Gordy told me, he would not be able to make this meeting, cause he was, today is July third. So, let's understand.
So Jeff, there was one item you wanted to show us.
But, um, for your information, and since this has been a hot topic for the last month or so about, uh. Ordinance adoption and enforcement, just by coincidence, BLCT is having a Zoom seminar. At two and a half hours, you log in with your um ID and your password. And they will talk about um updates to effective zoning, uh, uh, ordinance adoption and effective. Uh, ordinance in the judicial bureau.
So if this is in the select board's wheelhouse, this is just informational for us?
This is informational for you.
Cause they're the ones that have to make the decisions on all that. They're the ones that are dealing with all the issues with their adoptions that they have now.
No, no, there's, the, the adoption process starts with the planning commission. I mean, everything.
Does, I just see nothing on the four-wheelers allowed on Route seven. I've seen nothing on the naked, I bet in these planning commission meetings, I haven't seen any of that stuff.
Okay, so my suggestion to you is only to look at that, and if you have the time, log in. Um, and try to glean the information. The other piece I have coming out. Is uh updates to the open meeting law, which became effective July one. So you have a list of things, so there is a list of things. Um, oh, I'm sorry, I thought there was a comma. So it's livestock running at war.
Thought it just meant.
I thought it was livestock, Tom had been running at war.
People running around.
People running at large. That's what they were, they were getting.
Well, that is on glossary.
I think you can still.
Running at large. No, not in Pittsburgh.
You cannot, there.
Sure, you cannot streak in Pittsburgh.
There are three, there's three towns that have ordinances against public nudity.
What, what was that?
Yeah, what, what is that?
Pittsburgh, St. Albans and Rattleboro. Rattlebrows had one since nineteen ninety-nine when I graduated from high school.
Yeah, but.
Surprise they.
They have a naked bike place.
Yeah, don't they have like Burlington? Yeah, they have it in Pittsburgh.
They leave their house naked, they get on the bike.
Actually, I'm glad of that. I'm glad of that.
So. So anyways. Rick Scott to talk about the historical marker.
Yeah, I saw that go up.
There was an article in Seven Days about the historical markers in.
I got a phone call about a week ago from Chad, works with the town. At the direction of Ann Reed, our town manager. The last Wednesday would be a good day to put the, or this past Wednesday to put the historical marker up on our property. Behind Route seven. And uh, thanks to Donna Wilson's great efforts on it. Um, Chad and. Oh, Tyler, and help me out, Ann, the redhead.
Peter.
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 Two hundred and fifty pounds, so we dug a hole, and put her up. There you go, Ann, I'll send you a picture.
I've been up, I've touched it already.
Did you touch it? Did you see if it moved?
No, didn't, settling in direct. I'm not judging.
She's over there stomping on the grass, cause I scratched all the grass off real easy when I started, cause I dug, dug the hole. And then we put it all around the market.
I watched.
I'm sorry, I would have come to the select board meeting last night, if you'd have waved to me, you could have come over and.
So is there gonna be like a ceremony?
Yes, there is.
Talked about, remember at the library, I mentioned?
Yeah, no, and, you know, it's uh. Governor Scott signed the proclamation for covered bridge week, which starts August second, the first day of uh.
He owes me, maybe I'll give him a call?
Give him a call, maybe he'll come down.
No, we, Donna, we talked about the.
Heard from anybody from the state, like, I mean.
We had talked about doing the dedication of that the weekend after, so it was like bookending, covered bridge week. Cause Pittsburgh day is a busy, busy day, so we had said, what if we book, bookended? Covered Bridge Week.
Okay.
Hey, there, Jeff just said, put it on the front of the town report here, maybe one of these.
Somebody's gotta have to uh, get the car out of the picture.
Got one or no? Got one already?
No.
No, we should, no, we should do that for the net, for the next number.
And Peter Hunt, who did a picture of the Pittsburgh Village Farm, came out really nice.
Yeah.
It's so old, all day. Did it? Did they give anybody, did they give?
Yes, yes.
You need a motion towards.
Schedule the date for the next meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.